Okay, we're ready.
Good evening. My call is meeting to order. This is a regular session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee County, Cochise, state of Arizona being held on Tuesdays, September nineteenth at seven P M. Our council chambers. You're in the beer event. Roll call.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill. Councilmember Joni Giacchino. Councilmember Frank Davis. Mayor Ken Budge.
There.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mel Sweet.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Anakline.
There.
A city staff, Stephen Parkin, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joel Landers, personnel director, Matt Gurney, public works director, Tim Cox, police chief, Jim Richardson, fire chief, Joe Estes, city attorney.
Thank you. For a moment silence, I'll just ask everybody to pick to stand and then we'll say the flag allegiance and take a moment for reflection on whatever you feel that is important going on in your life. Well, tonight I'm gonna take a little bit of personal friendly agenda. Actually tell you how proud I am to be. A mayor of the city. Over the last few days. We've had some trying times. With some border issues where some documented migrants. Were being released. In an unshelved net. That that. It was happening out at the Alco or Safeway parking lot. I mean, I personally just started to. Take every every conceivable way I could. And have personal contact with all of our federal representatives to let them know what was going on here and that. They were trying to call us a transit center. And because there's a bus stop. Bus stop is going a little bump and runs around our town and. There's no place for them to go forward. And literally. We thought we had it. I thought we had some things under control where they were not going to make any more releases to us. And then all of a sudden. Over the weekend, a call came in and they said, we have thirty two immigrants and no bus to pick them up. So they're yours. And so we had them actually brought here with them. They helped them for an extra hour or so. Like this whole place was cleared out. We started standing up people and it was truly amazing that, you know. Dinner was was stood up from four part lunches, four thirty for spaghetti dinner. We had people here, stuff sort of coming in, cots were being put together. And we basically housed them overnight and at five thirty next morning. Coalition for the homeless brought over a hot breakfast for them. And then we put them in our front of vehicle to look them back to where the bus was. And. You realize after that night, I mean, you can imagine what thirty two cops in this little area was. It's really, it didn't give them any space or was not driven. But it sheltered. Now was our intent for that night. So. With that, we held a meeting. We've decided that we're working with other big base organizations, which has been wonderful, but. We really need a single place to where they could be dropped off, they could be shelved for a few few hours and then possibly even overnight if the buses didn't come. So as a city, we decided to stand up and we've created another migrant place where we can show the people and I'm I'm undisclosed area at this point. I don't want to put it out there across the whole internet. And we're ready to do some things. We have a free volunteer system set up. People have been donating money to to both the the people that actually pay things, which is certain products still are expensive. And so the donations have been going to both the four part lunches and the homeless shelter. And that's why I suggest if you want to give a a money contribution that they're the ones. So with that. I made it known for sure that people realize that. This is a temporary situation that we're willing to stand up as a community and and shelter these people bombing up and. But this this is not sustainable and and we need something from the federal government. It's got yeah, a good day today, but we never know what's gonna happen an hour from now. So. Just a little thing. When I when I showed up here at five thirty in the morning, we take my family over to there. I picked the one family that was a a husband. And mother, a four year old daughter and an eight year old boy that's gone. And they've been on the road for thirty two days to get to this point. And. I just noticed most of the kids haven't even had shoe leaks, but they've had such a hard trip. So I. You know. It's not our point to judge or the point be whatever, but we are a community. And I think it's important that we are a compassionate community and that we didn't, they would just be wandering around in their neighborhoods lost. They could they they more bad things become about people and we're just not that way. So I just as a mayor want to say, I'm so very thankful that 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 I'm actually a a mayor of a of a community that has so much compassion and so many people that are willing to 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 help us as a city to to take care of these. And I have a I have a letter here. From our representative. Gerhalda and he's. Made a very right to Joe Biden and also to to the secretary of the homeland security. And I'm not gonna read the whole letter because it's very long, but. But the federal government's coordination efforts with local communities have fallen short and must be improved. The D H S preparedness plan also improve coordination. And with cities and other stakeholders, our urgent request of the C P A, the C P, the C B P, the board of control. And your administration proactively engaged and coordinated with these entities to help prevent individuals and families from being released in areas without resources and logistics. So we're hoping to the worst getting out and and I continue to work on that. That's kind of my my thing, but we had many city workers and also many volunteers. Come to our our house. So I just wanted to make that announcement and take a minute and. It's it's hard as being a mayor not to to think you own part of it, but it's really, it takes it takes a village to to take care of these things. And all the council members up here also, you know. Taking different different parts of this whole thing. Our city manager and our public works department and all the part of I became over and sift them all for or their illnesses that they had. And so. It was. An unbelievable coordination. I've been doing this crisis intervention for twenty eight years with a firefighter and could stand all that up within two hours. It was really amazing. So to me, I was all right. Nothing by. Going on. So with that, I'm gonna do a first thing in order of the call of the public. I think I have one person that was by no for Paul. Gray, did you want to speak at call or one of the items?
One of the items.
Wouldn't.
Well, actually. Yuma Trail. And my neighbor.
Come on up. If if it's an item here, I'll call you up during the item, then we can talk back and forth. It's called, we're just gonna have to say the words, you know, what we can't.
Well. As it goes, yes. I've been dealing with my neighbor on Yuma Trail. For a good ten years. Just continues to get deeper and deeper and deeper. And. With our rains. Previous, it's been dead chickens who blew up on the side of my house. When they died, they were throwing them over into my yard. And that's been about four years ago. We just kind of go along and I don't know what kind of contact. Or is having, I have no clue, but I've tried to be patient. Now. The rain. Comes through his yard and then. He has it set up. So he's got all of these. Electronic. Computers. Stoves, refrigerators, anything you don't want, and you have no place to dip in. He invites people to bring it and he'll take care of it. At my expense. The rain. Comes through this whole property and runs five. Five feet below. And water runs. Approximately it's the back of my house. And under it goes and. My husband passed away and left me. Once he, when he passed away, I don't know, but the word got out, but it really hit. I'm hoping that. I've been in this house sixty years. And I'm hoping that somewhere. At some point. I can have relief. From this going on. In at my property at Collet Avenue.
Thank you. Um, there's actually what the city manager, that's the person, there is some things going on. We can't discuss because it's a call of public.
Um, I mean, I can report now if you want me to, since Miss Grace Fear. And then O B was sent out almost thirty days ago, most violation, I'm sorry. On on all the above issues. When that thirty days expires, we are going to issue a citation. With the court did. And he will be expected to come in court now. We issued, we always issue a friendly letter and then we issue an O B and then we set. Okay. He has refused service on everything so far, but since he refused service, he knows we did.
It's not habitable.
Yeah. But and that's.
We can't go back.
So so where we're going is where we're going with this is we're we're going to file a citation in the justice court and the court's gonna give us court date and he will be expected to appear. Now, whether he appears or not, when that becomes Mr. Rest.
So we, there is, there is action being taken. And if you need more particulars, please contact them staff and they'll keep you updated on that.
Well, I've I've got. Things. Backing up in my head. I'm counting the days. One day hopefully.
It's. Hopefully, I I I. Understand. Yeah.
All right. Yeah, just so you can give me a call.
All right. So we will move on. First order of business will be accounts.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of one hundred eighty nine thousand thirty six dollars and thirty nine cents, subject to availability of funds. Got it?
I have a motion, a second to a page counts payable. Do I have any one questions from council? What's that? I had one, but I had an effort yesterday when I went in and. Make me happy, but it's reality that we're stuck with from his parents. So. And hearing nothing else, we have a motion and a second to pay accounts payable in the amount of one hundred one. That's one hundred and eighty nine thousand thirty six dollars and thirty nine cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Very numb, the eyes have it. So move. We'll move on now quickly to the approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of one minutes from a regular session on September fifth. It is also approval to a new person to the Evergreen Cemetery. And we have a. Parking facility use permit for Hal Avenue. And for two different days, one October eighth, the other one be October twenty eighth. And two. Extensions of premise patio permits on October seventh and October twentieth, and one special event liquor license from the Bisbee Council of Arts and Humanities. And I'm going to ask the full item C and also E, if they're associated together. Anyone else have anything in their mind? Speaking now, I'll continue a motion for everything but C.
I'm going to be a pretty consent agenda, items A, B, B, F, and G.
I have a motion and a second to approve. The consent agenda, items A, B, E, F, and G. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Very down the ice hat. Moving back to item C, this is an approval in parking facility right right away, use permit for the use of Hal Avenue in front of the Copper Queen Hotel for Indigenous people festival from Saturday, October seventh. Twenty twenty three from five P M. To Sunday, October eighth, twenty twenty three until four P M. Is anybody here from the Copper Queen to speak for this? Okay, without, these are my concerns and I see that I have the fire department. Chief here and so on. They say in their permit, they'll be able to take down to allow emergency vehicles through, but part of this whole event is actually setting up vendors and tenants. And I don't see that as in a viable situation to be able to clear out Hal Avenue so we can get emergency vehicles up there. I'm buying with their other permit, which was for an evening for a dance on the street where there wouldn't be anything that has to be set people to to move aside and 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 the two barriers, but. I also, I just don't feel like closing down a major street for two full days for a festival. They want festivals that more happy to get one of our parks and comments.
Things to make sense, what makes sense to give it a bar. I mean, block the streets.
I. After reading their permit, they talk about having vendors and all this other stuff. They're all going to be on the street. There's no way I, we're gonna get those cleared out. When we have a fire up there. It's the only way to get a truck in in some of that area. So so we have to be able to have that access on a pretty quick notice, not more than a minute or two of the way. So I'm not in favor of passing this. I vote. My my motion would be to deny deny this. Anyone else have this? Okay. I agree. All right. So with that, I'll make a motion that we deny. Okay, before I do that, also item E, which is a extension of patio premise permit, electric permit. Is also for that same event. So that you don't need to pass that one because the C would be denied. So I make a motion to deny either C and B, I see, I'm sorry, C and E on the consent agenda.
Second.
Any other? No, whether. Anybody else need to talk now? So we'll just vote and always, we have a motion and a second to deny the permit, consent agenda, I've been seen in the always paid up to signify this thing, aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Very now the eyes have it. Those two permits are denied. Under all business, this is item three. This is discussion of possible action regarding the request for proposals. We're documenting consultation services contract with the Camp Nakbo. And with additional information. Jeffrey Brooks is here to speak to this. He would sir, we tabled this last time of several. Additional information. Go ahead.
Great. It's the mayor, members of the county. Thank you. My name is Brooks Jeffrey. My name is Brooks Jeffrey. I'm the strategic planning consultant hired by the city of Bisbee to launch the Camp Nakbo project. As you remember in the last council meeting, our concerns about the the process of the RFP as well as the vagueness of the show. On reflection, we agree and we would like to then now recommend that the with the all of it be rejected. We go back, we we brought a much more concise scope of work, much more clarity in terms of the expectations of the deliverables and then put it up. Happy to answer any questions or concerns.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you for going back.
And I just, I want to take post responsibility. This is, this is, I'm leading the project inside and acknowledge that this is my effort and I'm I'm here to acknowledge that and move on and do our right. We we believe in the integrity of the process. We want transparency, accountability. We want to be a model of that. So we've got this.
Thank you. Further discussion. So. Yes. Thank you, Jeffrey. I know. You know, and so, yeah, then. Since they weren't all necessarily in the same line of the way they would come out or additional, but be much more intuitive. So what we will do is just under this whole business. Just let it die in place and.
Now you make a motion to reject all bids.
Okay. And we do the, thank you. I make motion to reject all bids and that they go back out for we giving process.
I second that.
Well, the motion second to reject all bids and go back and during the bid process, all those favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Nice having. Onward. Thank you, sir. All right. We'll move into new business now. New business will be the first item is item four, discussion of possible action to go into a board of appeals for the building code for the public hearing to render a decision on an appeal of the city code article seven point one point zero. One, seven point one light pollution code, section seven point one oh point one two, maximum total outdoor light output. And this is filed by McDonald architect and for Joseph Lewis, Lewis, which is the property owner at one hundred class inhabited. So what I'm gonna do is go into a. Make a motion to go into a board of appeals for the building code or a public hearing to render a decision on this, which will be item four. With that. I. We're going into a board of appeals. As a body. So with that, we're gonna give the appellate or any expert on their behalf to come up and present. Go ahead. We have ten minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Vange and council members. My name is Savannah McDonald. I'm the architect on the projects and I hope you got renderings of the proposed lighting on the building. But the. Just to kind of background, the situation and the story, we have basically three main issues we're looking at. One is facade lighting and historic glow lighting, which is unshielded lighting. Not required by code, really just an effort to celebrate this electronic and historic building. We often do it on buildings of this nature that are important to communities that are kind of defining in terms of identity, but not required. I heard from the D R B that was their preference to light the facade and and capture the history. We found, as you've seen in your packet, historic photographs of those of those globes at the front. I even even talked to manufacturers about recreating the globes at the southeast and northeast entries. Just like they were historically. Again, unshielded light, not required by code. So really just kind of comes down to community preference. The D R B as an option to me or as as explained to me in terms of the preference for their architectural lighting would to omit the parking lot lighting. Again, not something my engineers are necessarily comfortable with because of the nature of a parking lot and and also the the potential for safety issues. And so there is a recommended lighting level for secure and safe parking lot lighting. And the engineer has recommended and provided that level of lighting. So admitting it would just be something that as a community totally within your purview and allow us to do, but that just needs to be, I think, really clear in the motion. If we are directed against the recommendation to provide parking lot lighting. Personally, and my prep, my my kind of priority here is building lighting. It's egress and code compliant exit lighting for safe entry and exit into the building, which includes all doors and pathways on site, which are all within the property. So that would be sidewalks, ramps and stairs and all doors. The current code, which I'm sure for ninety nine percent of your projects works fantastically. This building is an exception. Being on, please believe it or not. You know, four levels, all accessible. I have fifteen exterior doors to to cover. So even without the facade lighting, even without the parking lot lighting, the required egress code compliant exit line does not fall within the allowance that the current ordinance provides. It does, you know, at a minimal level, it does fall well under the the previous ordinance, which is the Cochise County Lighting Code. Well, under that one, it's just even without the parking lot and the facade lighting. My egress lighting is is a higher limit per acre than the reduced ordinance provides for. So I am requesting at a minimum that lighting in terms of the facade lighting. And again, we we provided some rendering so that you can see at the northeast corner, highlighting those beautiful columns, recreating those glow lights. You can see some pathway lights that we that we provided at sidewalks for safe be for basically safe pedestrian access on sidewalks and all of the walkways around the building. Again, just highlighting the the beauty and importance of this of this iconic and important building. Gymnasium side as well. That's included in your packet. The intent being again, to just highlight and celebrate this building, but not required. So that is that is obviously your purview. Again, our our priority is that is the code compliant lighting. Everything else is icing on the cake and really up to your kind of community preference in terms of what's important to you for this building. So thank you.
Just one really quick question. You say a fifteen exit door.
I have eleven code required exit doors on all four levels and then four patio doors, which are like the entrance to for people's units.
Right. And with multiple opener emergency exit.
Yes. Yeah. And some of them happen like kind of under the gym site. So then I have lighting to light the path out to the public right.
And would they not be wired so when the door opens, they come on?
Um. They need, they, I mean, for proper egress, they need to be on from dusk to dawn to be something that's in the business of emergency. So they need to be like for people to come in and out.
They don't come yet through emergency.
Well, the entry doors, they they do come in.
Yeah, but not all those, not all those are emergency. That's a part of I know.
Yes.
That you should, if you have lights shut down or not in use, then they they.
Yeah.
Much different. I'm just asking if that's.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Most of these lights are on. And mostly that's are off all the time. All the remodel lights, park lights, those are only switched when in use. All these lights almost are only switched when used, but the calculation accounts for every single exterior light. No matter whether it's on all the time or not. And then in terms of the facade lighting, you thought, well, like if that was preferred by someone, maybe just during the holiday season, it could be, you know, just happened then and it would be excluded or, you know, suited from all other times of the year. We're open. Really, we just, we are fixing up this building really nice. We want it to be. You know, just kind of the ideal for the community. So.
Okay, that all?
Yes.
So you, is the owner here or any other expert?
It's just speaking.
So, thank you. We'll move on to the next. Which would be the bill inspector, any expert on that behalf? Joe, you're up and. Here from you.
Mayor Council, of course, public safety is paramount. If this is your, you can say him. And. It may be, you know, it's within your, of course, but the, if not a recommended, that just began getting individual exemptions because that leaves the endless extension. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna amend, if we're gonna amend for one person, let's amend it for everybody. And the uniform, but. I recommend not managing it. The, by the way, we we never did use Cochise County white pollution code. We had, I think, we've had three different light pollution codes in five cities. There was the old six, the nineteen, and now we're in. There was the old six, the nineteen, and now we're in the twenty two. The third degree, uh, you know.
Anybody have any questions?
Joe, so your objection to this is just based on, uh, not to make the exception. Or it's based on, it's not portable, because it's, this is an amazing building and, and if the. The owners try to make something of it, it's just based on not making the exception, or you think what we're doing is, is not good. I mean, in plain language.
No, I'm not an expert on this, Steve.
Oh.
But the, but I do know that these people didn't just, that these codes that we, that we've adopted to the light solution. Didn't just, just magically appear, they're based on, they're based on fact and they're based on reality, and they're being used a lot of other places. And, um, I don't know that it's going to compromise public safety.
Well, if I be building based on, I, I work in this field a little, uh, lightning is very important to safety. As long as we do it within the code, as long as it's reasonable, as long as it does not, not ugly, doesn't, you know, uh. And that's why I'm, I'm asking this question, we just, it's, uh, because we can, uh, you know, in everything is an exception. You know, sometimes you have to do an exception, you cannot operate so rigidly. But just my question, just because of this, who you think it's, what they presented is not good enough, so we can all understand what's going on.
I think a lot of us propose to know if it's beautiful.
Okay.
And they, that's, you know, that their job is to make it beautiful.
Yeah.
But it feels, and that level of lighting is not gonna be our code.
Just because, it's not gonna be to the code that we have presented, that where it's. Yeah.
Anybody else? Yes. Um, question, well, we're gonna discuss it among ourselves after, okay, if you have a question for him, then. I'm gonna answer something then. Yeah, I just wanted to hold that, thank you. So now, I'm gonna open this in public com- uh, comments, uh, for anybody that would like to come forward and speak. Uh, against this light. Sure, come on up.
Just say your name and let us. My name's Bruce Corret, and I'm with the B Dark Skies Association. First of all, we'd like to congratulate this company for expanding the number of housing units in the city and using. Utilizing and restoring existing buildings to do with. We have no issues with the design or utilization of the interior of this building. We know that this building is zone commercial, but it is a commercial building in a residential neighborhood. On a side street revising, it does not need to be illuminated like a commercial building in downtown Tucson. The outside parking areas are already illuminated by five street lights owned by the city of Bisbee. Um, exterior entrances can be properly illuminated under the lumen limits in our city ordinances. For commercial buildings that comply with all ADN guidelines. We hope that the city council will not approve this variance that allows this excess lighting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward, speak against this? Right, I'll open up for public comments for anyone before this. Okay, say none, I'll close public comments and we'll have a rebuttal by, have a can if you like, or. We have.
Um.
Three minutes for rebuttal.
I wasn't planning on it, but, um, I mean, I, like I said, we, we wanna do what's right by the community. Um, and I, I heard from DRB that they, they prefer the architectural and historic lighting, but it is unshielded, and I get that. Um, and then there's, you know, the, the preference to not have the parking lot lighting, so again, it's your purview, I just need those. All that, like, the kind of the buildings to be covered, um, the rendering, I think, on. This was the southeast corner, kind of captures the intention of the full cutoff strass, um, luminaires that are needed at those entries. They're, you know, intended to be historic compatible and fully compliant with the, like, shield. So, the, there, for those alone, it's, um, includes of all exits and, and entries of the building is of the, the, the current.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have a rebuttal, Joe? Okay, um. Then I'm gonna add for comment. Because they have a site plan committee, I would like to hear from member of a site plan committee, which right now would be the significant issue. What did the site plan committee recommend?
Site plan committee that yesterday to go over the entire site plan. Um, and the recommendation on the site plan committee was to approve the site plan, uh, with the exception of the light. Need additional information? Um, I, I, I mean, if any additional information I would share would be from my expertise in municipal lighting. So if you wanted that now, that's fine, if you wanna look, that's fine too.
Uh, I just wanted to report, much like we get from the PMZ, what, what the, uh, site committee, they recommended. So. With that, I'm gonna open it up among us now to discuss, um, I'm just gonna take one quick moment and. So what they're asking for, which is thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty for the full cutoff. Um, type of lighting, um. And six thousand seven hundred and fifty for the unshielded, so they're unshielded. That's our, that's, is what we would allow, sorry, what they're asking for, for that six thousand seven. Six thousand nine hundred and fifty unshielded, they're asking for fifty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven. So that's seven times the amount of what we allow on the un, unshielded. And then we allow thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty for full cutoff, and they're asking for ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight. So basically three times what we have in our ordinance currently, so, um, for the unshielded, it's seven times. And for the, uh, children, it's about three times what our current would allow. Now, comments, who wants to go? You want to say?
I, I don't wanna step on any of these toes.
Yeah. Would you like to open it up, here from the city manager? Okay. Now.
Okay. In a multitude of ways, um, we need to seriously consider what, what is going on here. Um, the mayor just told you how far over the limit, um, the particular application is. And, um, you can't judge everything totally by humans, okay? Uh, humans are important, okay, um, but the way you use the light. Uh, is very bit is important, maybe more than the amount of light there is, okay? Um, when, and, um. Mr. McDonald was at the site manager, so we had a little bit of this discussion yesterday, uh, she's aware of it, um, well. Um. You know, I'll, I'll take the globes first, okay, globes are the store, we had globes on City Hall still. Um, back in nineteen oh nine. And, um, then, then when we designed the new building, uh, despite the mayor's comments. We elected not to use any glow lighting on the rebuild, um, the reason is because light needs to. Light needs to go down in order to be effective, no one is above those lights. Therefore, it's not only a waste. To put light in a globe and shine it in all, all directions. But it also contributes to the light pollution that already exists, it exacerbates the existing situation. Um. With regard to the entry lighting, entry lighting couldn't be done, and I think she's rendered this pretty effectively. Uh, most, most of what is on here for entry lighting is acceptable, okay? Uh, you know, not counting ruins, just counting the way the light pictures points, whatever. And then watching, um, the science of a building with light. Uh, is, is very effective, if you really wanna show off your build. And I, and, and I believe that this is a, a nice building and has some unique characteristics. However, if you live below this, but. And you wanna take a look at the Big Dipper. You may not be able to see. That's the whole purpose of the light pollution code that you adopted last year in, in twenty nineteen. Um, the impact of light pollution may not be totally apparent to people. Who live in the same place for a long period of time, it creeps up on you, okay? It creeps up on you because we allow a little bit more, a little bit, a little bit more, and then more means you can no longer see the sky. Okay, that's, uh, I think I've read this before in, in, in public readings. Um, there's a few things about light pollution codes that people, um, you know, people either don't know or don't care. Okay, um, if you don't know there's a point, like, we should go, then, uh, then, you know, it, it's not gonna be effective. You don't care, um, then you're just gonna continue to allow this to happen again and again and again, not whether it's on a small scale or a large scale. Eventually, your sky is gone. Okay, so, um. And then, just speaking to the earlier comment from, from Mr. Ward, um, on this issue, um, the, uh. Forgot where I was going, it felt, it's, it's been a long week, um, but, uh, you know. This wasn't done in a vacuum, it was not on the basis of experience, and a lot of experience in a lot of communities, and that's why. International Dark Sky Association was the vision implemented, and so, um, this is. Since we adopted that code in twenty twenty-two, um, this is the first big tap. Okay, of our ability to enforce our own ordinances. Um, but I, I will say this, on a smaller scale, uh, we did have one occasion. Right after that ordinance was adopted last year, uh, where an individual put lighting on the side of a building. That wasn't in compliance with the code. And when Joe went out to see him and tell him that it wasn't in compliance with the code, he basically found his nose at it. Uh, and we gave about, we gave way too much time, about six months to come into compliance, and when he didn't do it, we issued a citation. And, uh, we figured that we were gonna be able to settle at that point, well, we challenged the citation. And it went to the Justice Department, lost. And, and so now he has nice guy friendly lighting on all four sides of his building. No ordinance has any teeth that must be rolling to, of course. And I think we've already suffered enough, um, in this community over the last twenty years with creeping of light pollution. That's, that's going on, um, and, you know, as, as you need, as this building is. And I'm not saying no exceptions, I'm saying, if we work with. The building owner and the architect, and we come up just a few lumens over the limit. But it's not approaching on other people's view of the night sky, and that's something we can really improve, okay? We're not, we're not hard and fast, we're just hard, um, and so, uh, I believe that, uh, we, we, we need to stay with the code. And we were, we, we are going to be more than willing to work with the architect and the building owner. We would like to see a redo on this, um, that would be, uh. As totally compliant as possible, we can discuss it, waivers that may or may not be needed, but I'm, I'm only saying that as a last resort. I'm not saying we're willing to optimize or not, but we are willing to make sure that where there's an issue of safety. For the building activities, that we, we will, we will make sure that happens.
Okay. Um. So, yeah, he did a really good job, uh, before the light too, you please, so it's, everybody can hear it.
Uh, thank you, Sweets, all right, for the explanation, and I was just, uh, the conversation continued out. Building itself, and, um. Not about the impact of the community, um, and I couldn't kind of address that, about how. Light pollution kind of creeps in, um. And I don't need to say anything else, just taking in consideration of the impact on the community itself.
Well.
I, I, I would say that I think the problem, um, of course is to rework it. And see what the mouth would, certainly, uh, you know, we need to keep our skies. The way that we want them to guard. Where we live ninety miles from Tucson, we don't have this pollution, that degree, and I am sure there's a way this can be. Reworked and, uh, worked on buildings.
I agree, I mean, to look to, uh, but it probably is to go back and see what we can compromise. I'm, I'm not saying to, because I wasn't involved in that code setting, I just wanna make sure, like, Steve, I, I actually answered most of the questions I had. Were there safety concerns, then maybe you can see how we can work it out, and maybe even come up with some ideas to, to, to fit what, what, to look at. And keep it, uh, this before, but we can make sure it's convenient to be, so I'm, I'm, I'm glad.
Um, my only last comment would be. Of course. The ordinance we passed was for the dark skies, but we have to understand that this is a very unique situation. I can see this building from my bedroom window, I'm not close enough that it will probably light my bedroom window so much, but I know. There are many neighbors right next door, it will, they'll have to get blackout curtains if that was enough of trying to, that's, had it shown. Because they're literally forty feet away from this, so. That's my concern is, is that we have two things going on, two issues, one is to protect our unique neighborhood. And the other one is, of course, lighting and safety for a, a new project, so I'm hoping that we can, we can come to some sort of. Downward lighting so that it doesn't light up the neighborhood around them, that will satisfy them, and that they can also. Have people that are coming and going from there to save them, so, um, I. Would entertain any kind of a motion on what we would like to do, ask them to deny this, uh. No, we're not gonna, this is on a table, this is, uh, we're in a, we're in a board of appeals, so we have to make either a A or an A, I think. No, we make our motion, then, then I can, or, you know, we're back in the normal, uh, session, so. Um, I think we'll deny that, this, as, uh, presented, and that we ask that the, uh. The architect and owners come back to the city and the site committee and see what, uh, they can bring back in a more, uh, reasonable amount. So I have a motion to deny the, uh, request as presented.
Oh, certain.
Anyone else, anyone else have any other, within a motion second to not permit, anyone else have anything to say, if not, uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Sweets.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, actually, I'm, you know, so. All right, uh, moving on, uh, number five, this is a public hearing for a special use commitment application, point three oh one. It's gotten a public approval of a special use commit, submitted by Joel Howard, and he has power for the purpose of allowing them to operate a metal. Grabber, hidden shop from the property located at thirty-nine old, old Douglas Road. Um, so I'm gonna open this public hearing and hear from the appellate, who comply for that, if they're like that, come up and present.
Yeah, my name is Saul Howard, um, I bought the Old Benedict Hospital Church on Highway.
About eight, nine years ago. And all of a sudden. Um, this, this landed on me. I've been cleaning property and I've had the property survey that I knew you guys wanted, so I'm doing that. I wanted to cleanse myself anyway. Uh, so, uh. I'm, I'm just here to whatever you want. Let me know. Any questions?
Okay. Through the public hearing, I'm gonna just let you come back and then after we hear both sides and then, and then ask if anybody has questions of you can come back up. Okay, all right, thank you. I'm gonna ask anybody in the public that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this. Say your name.
Hello, I'm Morgan Douglas. I'm Joel Howard's significant other. So of course I'm very biased. My understanding was that there were some things that the city wanted. The city wanted the property fenced. Which as Joel said, we've, um, got a survey. We've got the material to have a fence. We're moving stuff around so that we can fence it. Um, the other things that I understand the city wanted was a sales tax. And as soon as for sales tax number, whatever, I don't know the exact terminology. Once we have, um, gotten all the approvals, our intent is to do that. He's been operating there for nine years now. With. Not really a bump or a complaint. Um, so I would really like him to continue to be able to operate. It's a pretty low key operation. He does maybe. One paying job every two months. This is really a personal shop. This is where he's rebuilding a fifty-two Chevy. He's doing, um. Projects for people that, um. No one else can do. Joel Howard can fix anything, anytime, anywhere. And as a lot of you know, you guys have showed up and said, hey, huh, his name is Hot Rod. All right, can you help me out? And he's like, yeah, sure. So he is a, um. Real asset to the community because stuff gets done in that shop. It doesn't get done. Anywhere else. Doesn't get done in Tucson. Barely gets done in Phoenix. So anyway, um, I'd really like to see him to be able to continue to play in his shop. Which he has put a ton of work into. Um, and we would be more than happy to comply with anything the city needs or wants to bring it up to standard in code. Um, so that's my two bits. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have come forward, speak in favor? I'll open it up for anybody to come speak against this zone, this change. Do we have any?
We didn't receive anything. No, sir.
No correspondence? All right, um. I'll close this public. Well, I'm first gonna bring the pellet back up and say if they have any question, they, of the. Anyone? Well, you lucked out. You didn't have, unless you have a closing statement you're like me quickly. Just I like keep going. Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, I'm gonna focus public hearing and open it for discussion among council members. But he had any. What's yours?
I mean, this had been discussed at the planning and zoning and we recommended for this to see forward and, uh. Uh, I, I said on that committee and I think. Like, uh, like, uh. The lady was just saying, uh, it's, it's not a big operation. We've come to understand that. We'll report it to us. So. I have nothing against it. I think. We should move forward. That's my, my own things.
Yeah, but she got to the one question I had and that was, um, the, um. You made noise as far as neighbors and no one's complaining.
No.
Boy, it's been out there enough. If there was an issue, someone will say, so I don't see what the issue would be. The way it's, it's right. It really does impact the neighbors. It's nice to see another business coming in, asking, shutting down.
We are, they appreciate it and they, she, what they, what she said, they're willing to do whatever and they're trying to do whatever. So I think.
Right, no objections. Any other?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just, yeah, just comment from staff. We, we don't have an objection to the operation. Um, it's just a matter of making sure it goes, comes into compliance with all the regular rules because. Because he does have a paying customer once a lot.
Yeah.
Uh, as he admitted and, uh, so that makes him a business and, but, uh, you know, uh, he's been out there as long as I can remember. He's never been a problem.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I move to approve special use permit, uh, twenty-three dash zero one for the purpose of allowing the metal fabrication top to operate from thirty-nine old Douglas Road.
We have a motion and second to approve the special use permit application twenty-three oh one. Uh, roll calls.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Johns.
I.
Councilmember Suede.
I.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein. Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes immensely. Seven zero, so moved. All right, moving on now to. A lot of spending some more money. Item six is a discussion of possible approval to purchase. A broom and badger mechanical sweeper under the Sourcewell contract. Come on, we hear the number. Go ahead, Matt. They're the number to matter. It was your.
Public Works would like to, uh. Have approval to purchase this sweeper, um. It's a lot, it is three hundred and five thousand dollars and change. Uh, in the end, this will save us a lot of money in our roads. Um, we now have been paid on roads for, dang, those nine years, I think. And, um. Excuse me. And, uh, one way to, a, a, a big way to maintain these roads going forward is to sweep the, keep the rocks off the roads. Uh, and then you just have gravel and gravel on, on the road and just surface like sand deeper against each other. So this will be a, a very good asset, uh, for the public works and for the city, uh, to keep, uh. Our streets cleaned up. Everything from, I mean, and this is small enough. It's, it's the same size as a small garbage truck that goes in, into Old Bisbee. So we can do our small roads in Old Bisbee, which is one thing that I've been, I don't know, hard time trying to find. Uh, and we wanna be able to service everything that we, uh, all roads. Um, so this will allow us to do that. Uh, we've been, we've looked, we've had it in the budget for the last two years. Uh, as I've been looking for the right, uh, sweeper, this is, uh, local to the United States. Uh, parts are available, uh, unlike other companies that we were looking at there from France or. Other places. So this is definitely something that we put some work into to find the right one for the city.
Hey, questions?
The only question I had was sign how compared to our other ones. So.
Yeah.
And quieter, I hope.
Yes, yeah, the other one that did. And we don't have to have, uh, a, a one truck behind it or in front of it. Uh, so it, it's a lot, but I, we watched, I watched, uh, videos on YouTube on it, trying to, you know, see what other people were saying about it. And I seen it clean some streets that had garbage bags in it, this trash, and it just picks it all up and it was. Really clean. I was very impressed with, uh, some things I was seeing in the video.
Well, spending a budget a couple of years, I know that last one was from a foreign country and I had some doubts on that one, but this one. After looking it up on the internet myself from the company, it's a Zuzu chassis.
Yes.
Not the same as our little garden truck. And then of course it has the suction thing and it'll all come from this. Yeah, any other discussion? Sure.
If this passes, how soon will we take the vision?
Uh, about a year. At we go, yes, uh, probably not till October or November of twenty twenty-four. So we'll have to probably add it to the new budget. In twenty twenty-four.
I think why so long?
That's how, that's, they said, that's how long it takes. They said that we're not gonna promise anything sooner. We don't know because they're, they're, they're building it from scratch. So, yes, uh, another thing with this that I didn't mention, it has the ability to dump into a dump truck or into a, a dumpster. Um, so if we don't, we don't have to come all the way back to the yard over here, dump it in the back. We can. If we have a, a stage dumpster or a dump truck, you can dump in there and not have to go all the way around town. So.
What's the warranty on?
It has a twelve month warranty. The chassis for, for the, the sweeper part of it. Uh, for parts and warranty, um, parts and labor, the chassis, I don't have anything on the chassis at this point. Uh, cause it's, it's cost much severing.
So repairs or anything like that?
Anything within the first year, if it's mechanical or anything that's. Uh, if it's wrecked or broken or, or fire or whatnot, that will cover. Won't be under the warranty, but if actual parts, uh, wear or function wrongly, that'll be under the warranty for the first year.
Becomes a commercial.
Yeah.
Warranties, they don't really warrant much on commercials or something.
Yeah, yeah.
By a hundred thousand. Million dollar fire truck.
And that's, that would be my concern, uh, and because what, what I had with the trucks, I just wanted to make sure we have some kind of. Warranty or some kind of, you know, some protection.
Body itself, not the chassis, not the chassis. I'm guessing it's probably close to a year to two years.
So, so that would be, you will make sure that's, that's covered.
Yeah.
That, that's my concern.
Oh, yeah, a year to figure it out.
And this is nothing fancy. Uh, it's mechanical. Um. I, I looked at pictures of the inside and the inside switches are all toggles, switches that are easy to find. Uh, it's just a, a pretty, uh, useful, uh, just bare bone kind of thing that is what we need.
So there's no potential of an extended warranty somewhere that would cost some of the money. Mister Smart.
No, and everything and everything, all the warranty itself is in these, in the documents as well. Uh, and it kind of just goes out good, but it's, yeah.
That's one more question on the personnel, the drivers. Do we have certified? I mean, does it need to have a certified?
No, it's same size as our old Bisbee garbage truck, the Zuzu.
Yeah.
It doesn't require a CDL, uh, which is, uh. I mean, we, we try and have CDL drivers for those positions anyways, uh, but it does not require that.
All right, that's all. I'm gonna send a motion.
I move to approve the purchase of the Elgin broom badger mechanical sweeper under Sourcewell contract.
Second.
I have a motion and second, the purchase and helping broom badger sweeper. Um, a lot of money, but I'm just gonna say all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold me. Nice handle. Welcome to the sweeper. All right, item seven, discussion box approval to award a contracted boots, a hanging company to paint the buildings at the public thing by towards. So Graham, I told.
Uh, looking at working contract to paint through buildings there for twenty-four thousand nine hundred and three dollars. Uh, building had an maintenance of ninety nights.
Yeah.
So it's, it's started a little pretty rag.
All right, questions?
I'm just, uh, basic question that you go through the bidding process. Did you have more than one day?
Four hundred dollars difference. The reason I went and I was worried the other one would get too close to business and then. Before you can complete the job and that would be a mess.
Right, any other questions?
What color can you? I'm gonna stick with this color here. Yeah, it's getting shot roughly, uh, a banner gray body, uh.
We have been replacing some windows, certainly.
Yeah. Fish and work and all the stuff.
Yeah, agree on this time, uh, on this one. It's time that the thing that building.
Keep it around for a while. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to award the contract, the roof painting to paint the buildings at the Green Mine.
I second.
I have a motion and second to award a contract in which painting for the Green Mine tour. Almost in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold me. You're in on the eyes, have it. Welcome to Maryville. Actually, old code. All right, I made, I made this discussion of approval to update the fire inspection job description of the visiting fire department. Well, you hunk into the last again. Well.
City of New Orleans Council. Um, this evening, um, I'm presenting to you along with. Chief Richardson, um. Updates to the fire inspector job description. And we spent a good amount of time on this, um, utilizing two existing job descriptions. Um, in which. They were already approved, et cetera, and it was going through the process of refining that position to get, um, the specifics that. Chief Richardson felt are necessary, uh, and will best benefit the city and the department. Um, this position will remain non-exempt classified. Participation in the public safety retirement system. This position will remain an active firefighter. So when called upon, that will be an option. Um, and again, just to ensure that we have proper status. Um, the fiscal year twenty-four budget did include a line in for this position. And, uh, in anticipation for this update and then filled it permanently. It is not currently filled at this time.
Questions?
Go ahead. You just said that you merged two jobs into one. What were those two jobs?
There was a. Fire lieutenant, training officer, fire marshal, which was updated and proved in two thousand and ten. And that included firefighter EMT certification and job duties. Um, the fire inspector position was approved by mayor and council in October of two thousand and eighteen. That position did not include firefighter EMT certification or job duties. That position was also never filled by the city. And so tho- those were the reference. Um, again, coordinating so that we could better meet the department.
We have a firefighter and.
Cover on our faces.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm happy to see this drawing updated. We gotta bring it back to us. And I'm very happy it's gonna be an active player.
I agree.
I'm, okay. Gee. Um, how many inspectors do we refer now?
Uh, we have two, well, three with myself. Do we anticipate sending anybody else to inspector's school?
That would be a variable depending on.
Uh, if they wanna do this. I assume down the line someone else is gonna be interested in doing this. But. I'm hoping to get some more people interested in it, but. I haven't made, made people go get the certification.
Because when you look at all the duties, it's, it's pretty extensive. And. I mean, it might even be too much for two people. So.
Um, well, the firefighting duties are only as needed. If they're. They're not gonna be working twenty-four hour shifts. It's a, it's a ten hour, eight hour day, whatever. They're not gonna be working twenty four hour shifts, it's a, it's a ten hour, eight hour day, whatever. You know, four days. It's like the fire marshal was before. It's a ten hour day job. At home at night. If there is. A fire while they're at work or there's a car accident, they're gonna help out, it's like. It's like I did now with the department. I just wanted the firefighting duties. Uh, in the, now, in the description, so. We make sure we have made that. When we do get short handed, you know, we lose people all the time. We have an extra person there.
And I appreciate that, that those were included, I'm just. Like I said, it just seems like it's pretty extensive for. I guess I would request that we send more as allowed or as the fully come up. That we try to get more. Just as backup.
I, I agree, I love the thing where guys. They're interested in doing this. Some of this is begun through the N F P A, I think. Through worklogs and so on. If there is causes due to the N F P A. You can't earn. Yes, the way I got mine, yeah, so under. Under our, under my experience was, anytime you became an officer, you had at least be a fire inspector one. That was one of the requirements and wouldn't be a bad situation here if we're gonna have officers. At their first place, to move up to a fire marshal, you need to work with two, but that's the first step to get them. Uh, understanding, because part of the thing is not only. Putting out fire, but also knowing what by cause of fire, and so that's. I think that's where I'd like to see the department headed at some point, that's one of the conditions for the. Promotion to them, to an officer.
I agree with that.
But that's all that's for us right now, so, but.
I made notes, thank you.
We got a year, okay, anybody else? Have to say, how about a motion then?
I move to approve the update for the fire inspector job description for the Bisbee Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve an update to the fire inspector job description for the fire department, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold may. Very nice, have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't get to go away. Yeah, okay, number nine, this is discussion possible approval of property and evidence technician. And community service job officer job description for the Bisbee Police Department. It's like you got a call.
Yes.
The chief. Okay.
I mean, everybody's up. Everybody's up.
Anyway. Thanks, guys. You're asking, um, go ahead, well.
I'm going to address these individually, I think, if that is agreeable with everybody. Um, so first, I will review the property and evidence technician. This is an established and vital position um, to the Bisbee Police Department. And these duties were previously covered by either reserve officers or part-time retirees as needed. Um. We discovered that there was a lack of a formal job description for this position despite. It being essentially done under duties as a side, so it was. Once we noticed, we put the. Time and effort into creating something, um. The position is non-exempt, classified and participation in Arizona State Retirement System. This has been in discussion and the fiscal year twenty four budget did include a line item for this. Uh, position in anticipation of approval of the job description. And also in anticipation of the staffing changes, um, which were a result of the transition to.
Wait, so they are R P S.
No, S R S.
Questions?
Yeah, so, so you're saying this position does exist now, I, I mean, do we have the person or, I mean, can you clarify what? What, what does that?
We have in the, um, I guess I will generalize and say the administrative side. We have, currently, we have an administrative assistant full time, we have two full records clerk positions full time. And we are looking to make one of those records clerk positions in, and.
Be reassigned then?
Be reassigned essentially, yes, and it would go through. All the recruiting process, yes.
So you're not hiring someone, money from outside, it's a person that exists and we're just moving up to this position?
That, that is.
It's be qualified.
I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Uh, we will still follow.
Yes.
All of the recruitment, but yes, there is a person in this position who is, yes, identified as.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or may I move on to community service officer?
Go ahead.
Okay. The community service officer position is a new position for the Bisbee Police Department. This position has grown from the need to establish a position for the police cadets. Pending a police academy serving. Because the police academy start dates are sometimes. Annually, sometimes every six months, depending on where we're going to send somebody. Obviously, using the Salida Academy in Douglas is cost effective in many reasons, but again. We're, we've been in the process of hiring for the January Academy. This intention is to have a position where we can offer. A full-time position to a police cadet who is not yet in the police academy. Um, many benefits from this position, one, they can assist with. Non-uniformed A Z post activities, they can help with. Um, traffic control, um, things of that nature, they can also get familiarized with the department. They can be a, a help and an asset in regards to administrative tasks. Um. And so, that is the intention. Um, right now, it. This isn't necessarily a position that's gonna be added to the budget or a specific person for this. The intention would be to hire a police cadet. Who is going to be a hired as a police officer when they start the academy. I cannot hire a police officer three months before the academy because they can't work in that position or in that faculty.
But this is like a step thing?
It's a step in. But I would very much like to have an official place.
What's budgeted, was, or you have the?
It's, it's not that it's technically.
Because you have so many.
Because we have, yeah, we have police officer management slots.
So my question is, um. And I think it's a good idea. Because then they can get. A little bit of hands-on and everything before they go into the academy. But we know that not everybody makes it through the academy, so in that event, if somebody should not make the brief, then. Then what happens?
Um, in regards to my end of the paperwork and, you know, record keeping, so. If we say a cadet has passed all their background, they have an academy date, we are going to onboard this employee and start that. I am going to onboard them with an offer letter. And a job, excuse me, an offer letter for the community service officer. Prior to the police academy start date. I will do a separation of employment from the community service officer position. And they will then start a new job offer under the title of police officer. And so we are separating that, so they are ending one job, starting another. It just happens to usually be on a Thursday, Thursday, Sunday. And, um, and then again.
And if you don't make it, then.
Then they don't have their position, if they want to go back and, you know, say, well, now I've seen the department. I like what's going on, maybe if there's another position open for records clerk or something of that nature. They might be able to fill that or something else maybe in the city, so.
Okay, so, um, follow up question, while there, the community service officer, will they be in. A S R S or P S P R S?
It would be A S R S if we, they were to extend the twenty weeks, so. We would have to evaluate that depending on the start date of the academy. So if the start date of the academy is greater than twenty weeks, which would be three plus months. Then we would start them in A S R S as a contributing member. That, that contributing status would end when they transfer into the police department decision. If there, if this community service officer position is going to be less than twenty weeks. Then they can continue to work full time, not contributing to the A S R S system. So A S R S has a twenty twenty rule. They cannot, an employee cannot work more than twenty hours a week for twenty weeks. Otherwise, they are automatically enrolled and they have to pay back from day one of their employment. So that is something that's monitored very closely, as it affects the employee and also the city.
Okay, so then, um. If they start out in A S R S and then they do complete the academy, going to P S P R S, will that? A S R S. Roll over into P S P R S or how does that work?
That would be the choice of the employee, um, they would have to approach P S P R S with. Purchasing service time, or they can keep that there, they can leave it there and perhaps one day they. Take another position in A S R S, they can continue contributing. Or they have the option of refunding what they've contributed. Into A S R S.
There, it's important to note that, um, the whole transition that. Um. Was just described to you, that, that whole time. Uh, that candidate with that position remains probation. Uh, which means it's, it's our call whether or not they continue based on their performance. Uh, in the academy and their performance working for us in other, in other ways. Uh, one of the big advantages to, to the system is. Uh, quite likely will be able to shorten the field training time. Once, once the candidate is out of the academy. If, if, if we get a long one that goes three months or so before they actually start academy. They can be doing stuff that is the same as their F T O O then. While they're ready to get into the academy, so, uh, as you know, um. It can take a whole year, the time we hire somebody until the time we can put them out on the street on their own. And, and, and this will get shortened that time a little bit. Once they can actually do stuff.
I, I like, I like the idea, this is like training in the waiting, it's, it works well, it's, it's.
Thing is that this helps us secure people that might end up going someplace else because they get into a faster gap.
That's a good idea.
And that has happened.
Yes.
Okay.
Saying that. Your damn motion.
I move to approve property and evidence technician and community service officer descriptions. For the Bisbee Police Department.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve. The property and evidence technician, community service officer positions for the Bisbee Police Department, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold may. Very nice, have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, last item business is three nine.
Um, only one recap, Mr. Mayor, because I think you articulated very well. Events of the past few days, um, I just wanna state that, uh, I saw very best. Of what Bisbee has offered over the last five days. And very proud to be a part of. So, actually.
And they're asking, wiring mics in the pool.
Oh, you wanna pool?
I, I updated it myself.
Say, but remember the pool.
Believe me, we did it every day, you remember.
I, I went up there today and I probably will be like. All right, with that, our game.
I make a motion to adjourn.